Okay, the meeting is streaming and recording. Mayor, show us when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge on this Thursday, December 17th, 2020. We will call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM and ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Crusek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Madam Mayor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Clerk Kagan. If you would, please join us in a moment of silence and in dedicating tonight's meeting in honor of three longtime Woodridge neighbors. In memory, we remember Mrs. Carol Berg and Mr. Donald Smuskowitz Senior and Mr. Lenny Berg. Lenny worked both for the Village of Woodridge and the Park District. Just a terrific person and we are so sorry to hear of the loss for the Berg, Smuskowitz and Berg family. They are not related. We remember them and we think of their families and friends at this time. Like to please ask that we follow with the Pledge of Allegiance being led by the Village Board this evening.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And. Tonight, we will go ahead and move right to public comment portion of our agenda. We'll pause to acknowledge any written public comments that we have received prior to our meeting that first do not relate to tonight's agenda and we will enter those into the public record. Going to check with our village administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Members of the board, good evening. We have not received any written public comments in advance on items not related to the agenda.
Thank you very much. We'll pause just to acknowledge if we receive any public comments that do not relate to tonight's agenda, giving everyone just a moment because we are via Zoom. We will now provide members of the public an opportunity to provide comments to items that do appear on this evening's agenda. Also, we'll pause to acknowledge any written public comments that we have received prior to the meeting this evening that do relate to the agenda and enter those into the public record if so needed to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. We do have one public comment that was received in relation to the Guiding Light Special Use Permit, which is on the agenda this evening. It is from Philip Markowitz. He is the owner of Mid Point Two over on 71st Street, which would be an adjacent property to the proposed Guiding Light. That public comment has been shared with the entire board and will be entered into the public record. I'll look to, I'll look to Madam Mayor, I'll look to Mr. Green to see if there's anybody in the waiting room wishes to make a public comment at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, we have nobody queued up for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So now we will go ahead and then move to the omnibus agenda. I'm going to ask, please, for a motion to approve items A through E and the acceptance of F and G.
So move. Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek, and a second by Trustee Hendricks.
Yes.
Is there a request from anyone for any item to be considered separately this evening? If our administrator would please read the items that appear on the omnibus agenda for us.
Thank you, Mayor. First item A is Resolution 2020-103. It's a resolution extending the March 17th, 2020 Emergency Proclamation through January 22nd, 2021. Item B is Resolution 2020-104. It's a resolution ratifying certain emergency actions taken under the March 17th, 2020 Proclamation of Emergency. Item C is Resolution 2020-105. It's a resolution to approve a waiver of zoning application fees, preliminary and final plot of consolidation, site plan approval, and a special use permit for Edgewood School located at 7900 Woodridge Drive. This is School District 68. Item D is Resolution 2020-106, Resolution to Approve a Waiver of Zoning Application Fees in Reference to a Major Amendment to a Site Plan for Goodrich Elementary School Located at 3450 Hobson Road, also represented by Woodridge School District 68. Item E is Resolution, excuse me, Ordinance 2020-47, Ordinance Granting a Major Amendment to a Site Plan and an Amendment to a Special Use Permit for a Drive-Thru Facility for McDonald's Located at 231075th Street. Then Item F, our previous minutes for consideration, and then Item G are the counts payable registers for November 20th, November 25th, and December 4th of 2020. Now that concludes the omnibus agenda, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Clerk Kagan, if you would, please call the roll.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report this evening, the Village of Woodridge has, once again, in the spirit of the season, partnered with the Northern Illinois Food Bank to do a village-wide mobile food truck on Monday, December 21st, at Cypress Cove, which is located at 8301 James Avenue, right off the corner of James and 83rd Street. The mobile food truck will be available from 10:00 AM through 11:30 AM. This is our way to lend a helping hand to our neighbors throughout Woodridge who may need some help this holiday season and we want to be sure to get the word out. We will go ahead and put more information out on our website, but it is Monday, December 21st, right at Cypress Cove, we will have a village-wide mobile food truck. Thank you. That is my report this evening. Going to ask Administrator Stonich for your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First item A is Ordinance 2020-48. It's an ordinance providing for the submission to electors of the Village of Woodridge into Page Will and Cook County, Illinois, and to submit an advisory question concerning the allowance of adult-use cannabis businesses in the Village of Woodridge. And I will turn it over to Assistant Village Administrator Halek, who will lead you to the discussion as, and also Attorney Pat will be assisting as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Stonich. So before you tonight is an ordinance that was the result of the consensus direction from the board at the study session that you held two weeks ago. It would allow for a question to be put onto the ballot at the April election concerning the allowance of adult-use cannabis businesses in the Village of Woodridge. We would need to have direction from the board tonight, either passing or not passing this ordinance, in order to move forward for the timing of the upcoming election. So if there are any questions in terms of the protocol or the legality of it, if you have questions about the legality, we'll turn that over to Eric Patton.
Administrator Peggy, let me just ask a question. The question that would be put on the referendum on the ballot, you stated that it would be an advisory question. What does that mean, please?
It means that it is a non-binding referendum question, so it's essentially seeking direction or getting a perspective from the community as to what their thoughts are on this issue. But it is not a binding determination in terms of you would have to take action one way or the other based on the outcome of the election.
Thank you so much.
And I should point out there, I'm sorry, Mayor, you go ahead.
It's okay. No, no, go ahead, please.
I just want to point out that there are two variations of questions that are included in the ordinance. So if the board was so inclined to approve one, you'd have to identify which one you were in support of. One is, I think, a little bit more general than the other one is specific to allowing adult-use cannabis businesses in the community. And I think perhaps Attorney Pat can better explain the difference between the two questions.
Thank you.
The difference between the two questions, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, having some computer troubles, I'm trying to go old school and pull up my hard copy of my report here. I apologize. Sorry for the delay, folks.
That's okay. Thank you so much for looking that up for us.
So the two proposed ordinances, the first one, if you were to look in your packet, the first one is limited to the adult, the sale of adult-use recreational cannabis at dispensary businesses. So it allows for a dispensary and sale thereof. In the second question, it's more open-ended. It says, shall the Village of Woodridge allow cannabis businesses to operate within the village? That is obviously a question that, while not expressly saying it, certainly contemplates the possibility of growing businesses or businesses that do infusing and things like that with respect to cannabis products. So again, the first question in the packet is limited to simply dispensaries that sell and the other two are more, or the other one is more broad and allows for the use of, or the possibility of different alternative methods of manufacture and infusion of cannabis other than just simply the sale.
And this evening, we need to have that answer, which one everyone prefers?
Yes, you've, you're, you know, you, I guess, pick door number one or door number two.
Okay. I know we're on a tight time schedule because it has to get, you know, to the.
Submit it to the counties if we're going to be able to get it on the referendum.
Okay, thank you so much. If there's not a quick question from any board member at this time, I'm going to ask then, please, for a motion to approve the ordinance 2020-48.
Again, in doing so, Mayor, I'm sorry, whether the first version of that ordinance or the second version of that ordinance. And again, the first version being of the question limited to recreational sales, the second version of the ordinance making it the broader, allowing cannabis businesses to operate.
Right. So could we, if we just look at the ordinance, so I'm not sure now because this is kind of the first I'm going to be asking our trustees for this portion of the question. So at this time, can we have discussion?
Yes, I would recommend discussion before entertaining a formal motion because there could be some who want version one and some who want version two.
Okay, that would be great. So if I could just open it up to the board for discussion on which of the two questions you either have a preference or maybe you have a further question to ask, this would be the time.
Trustee Page, I support version one with the dispensaries.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Page.
Trustee Martinez, version one.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Blair, version one.
Thank you.
Trustee Crusek, version one.
Thank you.
Trustee Hendricks, version, version one.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Abbott.
I'm going to be voting no, so I'll just pass.
Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to the request for a motion to approve ordinance 2020-48 with, and trust, or excuse me, if we, Pat could maybe state again what version one exactly is.
Yes, version one with the following question to be submitted to the electors. Shall the Village of Woodridge allow the retail sale of adult-use recreational cannabis products at dispensary businesses licensed by the state of Illinois?
Thank you so much. The motion, please.
So move, Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Next, item B is Ordinance 2020-49. It's an ordinance granting a major amendment to a preliminary and final plan and plat of planned unit developments and a special use permit for a private school located at 7155 James Avenue. This was the proposed Guiding Light Academy. Director Porter will have a brief presentation for the board and we are joined by the applicant, Mr. Palmer, and his associates are here as well this evening. Thank you.
I'm, you're not muted, but we cannot hear you. Oh, there you go. Now you're here.
Okay. There I am. Okay, just making sure I got everything up. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Not here in public. As Administrator Stonich stated, that I will be providing you with a quick overview of the second half of this particular project that's before you and the Guiding Light Academy team is also here to answer any questions after my presentation. Next slide, Phil. So as you can see, the highlighted area is the subject property. Earlier this year, Guiding Light Academy came before you requesting a zoning text amendment that would allow public and private schools in our Office Research and Light Industrial District in which they received approval from the village board, maybe July, August of this year. And now they are seeking the official special use permit to occupy the former Westwood College site. It would be the fourth parcel again that's highlighted and it is one of four parcels within the larger midpoint business park here in the village. And Guiding Light Academy, again, is a therapeutic day school and they are currently operating at the 1051 International Parkway facility here in Woodridge. And again, as a second step, they are going, they're coming before you, seeking approval for a special use permit. Next slide, Phil. So again, the development proposal is that Guiding Light Academy is seeking to basically relocate their facility at the 1051 International Parkway into the former Westwood College facility. Staff has been stated, excuse me, the applicant has stated to staff that they anticipate utilizing the interior of the building as is. They're not making any major improvements to it. Again, this is one of four lots within a larger 17-acre planned unit development within the midpoint business park. And this particular business park received planned unit development approvals back in 1998. Next slide, Phil. This is the proposed traffic circulation site plan for the Westwood College site. And so they have denoted parking and circulation via various colors. So if you could see, green denotes bus van and taxi parking and that would be for PM pickups. The red denotes visitor parking. The blue would be staff parking. Purple denotes parent drop-off and pickup of students. Orange would be the accessible parking spaces. And then you'll see several clear circles within this as well that denotes either bus van or taxi parking or staff visitor parking. The applicant was required to submit a traffic impact study in which some of the highlights depicted that there will be a total of 120 employees at this site. The academy employs a one-on-one staff-to-scholar ratio and they expect that no students will drive in or park at the facility, rather they will be brought to the facility by their parents, taxis, or bus services. The traffic impact study also reported that the available 250 parking spaces on site should be sufficient for the use as proposed and detailed, with a conservative worst-case peak parking demand projection of 179 spaces. The traffic study conservatively projected that the use would generate an additional 396 daily trips, with 50% expected to travel along James Avenue and the remaining 50% split evenly between both Center Drive and 71st Street. The provided level of service summary expects that there will be minimal impacts on level of service along any of the nearby streets. Let's go to the next slide, Phil. Thank you. So we would like to touch on noise briefly. Before you, it's just a tentative plan of the village's future development of both a police department as well as a public works facility. There was trustee concern during the zoning text amendment case with respect to the location of this particular school and its adjacency to our proposed facilities. The applicant, when preparing their application for the special use permit, submitted a noise study by Dr. Thunder in which that particular noise state, noise study stated a few things. Pull up some notes here for you. So the applicant provided that and so they're saying that, sorry, I had to try to pull this up here and keep all screens up. Sorry. So the initial study that was submitted basically stated that they felt that truck lanes should be 300 feet away from the school. That gave staff concern because the proposed location of the salt dome will be somewhere around 293 feet, we're estimating. Again, our plans are preliminary, but we were estimating anywhere from 280 to 2993 feet from the, the building, from the Westwood College facility. Staff subsequently met with the Guiding Light team and their legal counsel with respect to our concerns in which a follow-up noise study was submitted in which the Dr. Thunder wanted to restate his opinion in which he felt that the sound level of a slow-moving truck is typically 80 decibels at about 50 feet. And based on the divergence of sound over distance, any truck movements more than 300 feet from the building would not exceed the noise already at the site due to traffic at the adjacent I-355. So the subsequent memo was basically stating that he, in his professional opinion, did not see an issue with the school being near not only our proposed facilities, but also the adjacent light industrial uses that are nearby within the midpoint business park as well. Additionally, as a condition of approval, it has been added to the ordinance and the applicant and his legal counsel has agreed that any concerns with noise in the future, if this school use is approved, they will be 100% responsible for abating any noise. So if they felt that any adjacent uses within the midpoint business park, again, it is light industrial, so if there's a, you know, a warehouse of sorts that may have truck traffic and they're experiencing noise, Guiding Light understands that they are 100% responsible for the cost of abating those sounds, as well as any sounds that could be being emitted from any of our future facilities adjacent nearby as well. So that concludes my brief overview of the particular project. I can provide any question, answers to any questions and the applicant is also present to assist.
Thank you very much, Director Porter. Do any board members have any questions or follow-up for Director Porter?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please, Trustee Crusek.
Couple of questions, first for Director Porter. So the sound, potential sound issues or the use that was brought up by Mid Point Two, that's not a concern at this point in time, would that be correct?
I'm sorry, Trustee Crusek, could you post that question one more time?
Sure. The sound issues, because we got the comment today from Mid Point Two regarding the potential of their uses. I know it won't affect the zoning, but if there were any issues sound-wise, the school is going to be the one that has to take care of that for the school.
That is correct. That is a condition within the ordinance that any noises that cause a problem for the particular scholars at this school, Guiding Light will bear the expense at 100%.
Okay. And number two, if I heard correctly, and I don't know if you, I'm sure you or perhaps the applicant can answer this, it's my understanding then that there's not going to be any students walking to or from this school.
To our understanding, we have been told by the applicant, and I will allow them to expound, that students will be brought to school, but I would allow the Guiding Light Academy team to respond to this particular question.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I am Lakisha Bigten, the principal here at Guiding Light, and our scholars are transported 100% of the time to and from school by either district transportation, district-provided private transportation, or their parents. We have absolutely no walkers.
Great, thank you for that follow-up.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, your follow-up?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please, Trustee Abbott.
I have a question regarding, I'm a little concerned with the email we got today from Mid Point Two. I was under the assumption that this had been worked out and that everyone, the owners and the management company of Mid Point were in agreement with this. And then at 5:50, I find out that that's not the case. I understand, Director Porter, what you're talking about regarding, I'm a little, I think it's a little confusing when you say that Guiding Light will pay for any abatement. What if, what if the noise of some potential future use is too loud to be abated or can't be abated sufficiently? Then wouldn't, wouldn't Guiding Light step up and say, no, sorry, we, we said we'll abate what we can, but if it's unabatable, then sorry, we're going to oppose.
That's a great question, Trustee Abbott. If there is a, I guess the question would be is that, you know, how do we know? It's one thing to preempt, if a proposal, let's say Guiding Light was approved tonight and they went in, scholars were there during the day, and then there was a proposal for development of one of the subsequent adjacent lots, excuse me. It's assumed that we, there would be noise based on the type of use and so they could, based on assumption, you're right, come in and say that we want to, we would not like to see this type of use located adjacent to the school. You're absolutely right. Or if a use went in and the sound being emitted from that particular development is louder, they may have tried at some sort of abatement issues and it didn't work. You know, the, the way we're writing this up, Guiding Light could in essence just have to live with, and those students would have to live with that noise, those noise levels. In essence, I mean, I don't know what could preclude them from complaining, but they are agreeing to locate within a light industrial district, meaning they are going to accept the, any potential noise levels that could be emitted from any of the adjacent buildings.
Well, that, that seems different than, than what you've said before. I mean, or maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but they said they would take on the cost of abating additional noise. That's different than saying you're waiving any complaints about future noise. Those are two different things.
That's true.
And I don't know, maybe.
Trustee Abbott, I, I don't think they're waiving any complaints. What they're acknowledging is that they don't have a right to prevent other development based on their own noise concerns.
Right, but that doesn't, that doesn't stop, correct me if I'm wrong, but that wouldn't stop them from just make complaining anyways. I mean, even if they couldn't stop it, they could, they could go to the media, they could, they could petition, they could do other things to, to oppose those, correct?
Well, they, they could certainly complain. I mean, I, I don't think we can stop anyone from complaining. I'd like to, but I don't think we can. But I do think that they don't have a legal right to try to prevent some other development in the area based on their own specific noise attenuation issues.
Okay. Could we, could we make a comment?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'm, I'm Bill Palmer, I'm one of the owners. This topic has come up several times and I think, you know, number one, and I'll let
and I'll let our, some of my other people address it more specifically, but we do want our, our scholars to believe and sense the real world. Presently on International Parkway, we are located next to Home Ice. They probably move fifty to a hundred trucks a day during the summer and fall and so forth, in and out of our, we have a shared driveway even. And we have no issues. Our facility is one hundred percent contained inside. You know, all our students are inside. So again, the noise levels are something else. Would you like to just, just talk about the real, how we like our children's health address?
Correct. So one thing that we don't do with, you know, our students is avoid contact with noise or sounds that may be offensive or that may cause behaviors, which is, you know, something that is commonly heard about with students with autism or related disabilities. We do believe in exposure and we take them out into the community where they are exposed to noises and sounds that are not expected. So this, you know, our environment where we currently are is also in an industrial lot. We're by, we're surrounded by factories. So we don't foresee the move being a major issue for our students in that lot there.
If I could just clarify for the board, this issue came up because of the, I believe, the retained expert, Director Porter, correct me if I'm wrong there. The retained expert by the applicant had raised this issue previously, and the applicant themselves hadn't raised the issue. It just came up in their, in their, their expert's report as one of his concerns. And so that we're just trying to make sure that once it got raised, obviously, we have to address it. But in fairness to the applicant, they themselves did not raise it during their application. We're just trying to be, and I believe the applicant is trying to be proactive on the issue.
Thank you. If I could, before we go any further, we did receive late this afternoon a public comment, which I have asked Administrator Stonehenge to please read into the record for us.
Thank you, Mayor. This comment is from Phil Markowitz in reference to midpoint. And this is to the village. This email is in confirmation. My voicemail list is left this evening. As an owner of midpoint two, I am concerned with the proposed zoning change to be discussed tonight in the village meeting. Apparently, the midpoint association indicated to the village that the proposed change was acceptable to the midpoint owners, but please be advised that midpoint two owners were never contacted concerning this matter. Further, we are concerned that the change may affect possible uses in other midpoint properties. We are currently negotiating with a possible user involving a freight transportation, which is now allowable. We want to be sure that this use would not be adversely affected by any zoning change or the allowed usage in midpoint four, no matter what the legal transportation items may be part of their business. Please see that these concerns are represented at the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Stonehenge. You're reading that into the record. I know that we all received this late this afternoon, just prior to our first meeting this evening. So just in being forthright and transparent, I wanted it read in the record and I'm again open for further board discussion if there is anything.
Yeah, Conahan, Trustee Martinez here. Just have a quick question.
Yes, Trustee Martinez.
Assuming that we proceed and approve this ordinance and the request, what is the timing for Guiding Light to move into this facility?
We could, we could open that up either Director Porter or Mr. Palmer.
Staff was informed, Trustee Martinez, that they would relocate the existing scholars and staff from their international park, which is actually a business-owned district, is not an, is not an industrial-owned district currently. They would move all of their scholars and employees and be in place at that facility mid to late spring of twenty twenty-one. Is that correct, Mr. Palmer?
At this point, that is our plan. We, given the, the norm, new norm that we're operating in, we may continue in this facility until the summer, move the transition slowly, maybe a little slower. We were, we're operating remotely right now. So we, like other public schools, we're experiencing the same things. We're waiting for some new guidelines. We're going to attempt to open up in early January remotely, hybrid situation. Probably be better addressed, but that's, we certainly will move into the building with some scholars by early spring for sure.
Thank you.
A quick question on, to Director Porter. Is there any additional parking required, given the use of the facility, or do they have sufficient parking right now? I know we discussed this before, but I've forgotten what the answer was.
We did. And so one of the requirements for, when we were going through the zoning text amendment process is to ensure that a study would be submitted in order to determine what the needs would be. And based on this, we received written, a written letter from the applicant's attorney stating that within five years, Guiding Light expects that the proposed former Westwood College facility, if approved, would have a maximum of a hundred and twenty employees and a hundred and twenty students. With that stated, they would have sufficient parking at that particular rate to, to meet the needs of the, of the school at that point.
So what, what's the current parking in that location?
There is roughly two hundred and fifteen parking stalls at the site.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback?
So, so just to clarify.
Yes, Trustee Hendricks.
Be a dead horse, but I think most of us are supportive of the, the, the school. We just don't want to, I guess the concern is potential use in the future and being maybe handcuffed in regards to the rezoning. And so and this might be a question for Eric. What you stated was is that I guess we can put that as part of the contract or the rezoning that any noise concerns would be waived? Or there would be some kind of?
Well, again, it's not, it's not that noise concerns are waived. It's that the responsibility for those, for any noise concerns they have, is on the school to resolve those noise attenuation issues. It's not the village's responsibility, nor is it the responsibility of any other prospective developer.
Okay. And, and that would be specific to, it, it, let's say the property got sold or the school got sold itself. Would, would that still transfer over?
The use, it would run with the use, not with the owner. Oh, Guiding Light sold to, you know, Acme School, Acme School would still be responsible for the same requirements and restrictions as Guiding Light would.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Mayor, a quick question, probably.
I'm sorry, Trustee Blair. I apologize for interrupting you. I just want to point out to Trustee Hendricks, in section four B of the proposed ordinance, that is the specific language regarding the noise attenuation issues.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I don't think I directly answered that part of your question, so. I'm sorry, Trustee Blair.
No problem. Just a quick question, just out of curiosity. Is there some sort of law? Whether national, state, whatever, on a noise level, when it gets to a certain decibel, where something has to be done?
Well, there are, there are, the village, there, there are noise restrictions for, for any particular, but they vary with use and they vary with location. So the answer to your question is yes, but I'm not sure if I can give you more specifics without more information for what you're asking.
It's, you know, like, I know the EPA has guidelines, correct? But they don't. Is it really a law or is it just a guideline? I guess is my question.
Well, there, there's, there are regulations on a state, federal, county, and local level.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Okay, thank you. So before us, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-nine. Going to ask for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-nine, which would grant.
Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any further discussion on this item? If our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
The next item C is an ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty. It's an ordinance granting a final plat of consolidation, site plan approval, and a special use permit for Edgewood Elementary School located at seven nine hundred Woodridge Drive. And this is for the zoning entitlements and special use permit.
Thank you very much. If I could, please have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty.
So move Trustee Martinez.
Or second, whichever.
Martinez and a second by Trustee Cruzack. Any discussion on this item? If our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Anybody Kurt Saden from the, from District sixty-eight, if there are any board questions. There he is. Item D is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one. It's an ordinance granting a major amendment to a site plan for Goodrich Elementary School located at thirty-four fifty Hobson Road.
Thank you very much. If I could, please have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-one, please.
So move Trustee Blair.
Trustee Blair, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our clerk would please.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item E, Resol- Resolution twenty twenty dash one zero seven. Resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a certain agreement per professional services between the Village of Woodridge and Christopher Burke Engineering. This is for the seventy-fifth street water main replacement of the frontage road for final design and construction engineering for this project.
I could please have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one zero seven.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
The last item this evening is Resolution twenty twenty dash one zero eight, the resolution ratifying certain emergency actions taken under the March seventeenth, twenty twenty proclamation of emergency. Specifically, this references some relief granted to E-three liquor license holders. Those are for art studios.
If I could, please ask for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one zero eight.
So move Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. In a second, please.
Second, Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Nay.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much, everyone. With no further unfinished or new business to come before the board, I do want to take this time, as this is our last meeting of the year this year, to thank the entire village board, all of our trustees, our village clerk, our village administrator, our village attorney, our entire village team for the excellent works throughout the year and just serving Woodridge in such an outstanding manner. Twenty twenty has definitely been a challenging year for everyone. But together, we have met each and every challenge that we can and worked through, I think, in the safest and most diligent way. And I, I just thank everyone so much for going above and beyond and helping in every way that you can. Just so proud of all the great works in our community and all the people that make it happen. So we do this together. Special thanks to our police, fire, all of our emergency workers, our hospital teams, our essential workers throughout the village in every field, all of our businesses in our community, and all of our neighbors who have just come together and helped to make a difference. And really helping each other in ways that some of us are very surprised sometimes when neighbors pop over and know exactly maybe the pick-me-up you needed, or my neighbor just brought over chocolate chip cookies. So I wish I could share them with you all, just as a way to say happy holidays and to enjoy the holiday season. But we've all been truly blessed and during this holiday season, let us all find a way to celebrate all the goodness and the kindness and to be thankful for all that surrounds us. And may we be inspired to look forward with great hope and to continue to take good care. You know, the generous spirit of our neighbors and our community is truly uplifting and we are very fortunate. So on behalf of the village board, the Village of Woodridge, we all wish everyone a happy, healthy, and just wonderful holidays to everyone. And our best wishes for a good new year. We thank you for your support, your friendship. And please continue to stay connected to the Village of Woodridge and to your family and neighbors. And again, take good care and don't forget to take out. And please shop Woodridge. Thank you very much and happy, happy holidays, everyone. Like to ask for a motion to adjourn our last business meeting of the year.
So move Trustee Cruzack.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks, followed by a second by Trustee Cruzack. Thank you very much. If I could, please, all those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Hearing no one, our meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you, everyone, and have a good evening. It is seven fifty-two PM. We are adjourned. Take.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.